You're all very welcome here this afternoon. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Sean O'Hara-Gon. I'm Mayor of Kilkenny City. My colleague, councillor Mary Fitzpatrick, who is the coheric of Kilkenny County Council, will say a few words to you after I finish. This afternoon is a unique event. First of all, to my fellow councillors on Kilkenny Borough Council and Kilkenny County Council, you are particularly welcome. What we are presented with in the next number of years in Kilkenny City is indeed a unique opportunity. It is rarely that any council is given the opportunity to have a packet of land in its core city centre, which is roughly equivalent to anywhere between a quarter and an eighth of the size of the city centre itself. It is a huge opportunity which the people of this city have been presented with, and we have been presented with that opportunity largely as a result of the foresight of our own councils, who for many years have been saying at elected member level that the future of this site is crucial to the development of the city. And as soon as we heard the news, which was news that, being blunt, we didn't want to hear, that this site would become available, we decided, very proactively as elected members and my predecessors as mayor, councillors Breath and councillors Fitzgerald, took the process on board immediately and decided to drive it forward in terms of how it was planned. Councillor Fitzgerald, I know, was here as mayor last year, involved the public in the first consultation phase in terms of how this site would develop. And that is a hugely important part of the process as far as the elected members of the council are involved. The ownership of this piece of land is in the hands of the people of Kilkenny City and County, and it is the people of Kilkenny City and County who, when it comes to the crunch, will decide what happens with what is their most valuable asset and our most valuable asset in the city. What we have here today is the presentation of a different type of approach, an approach which we agreed with the county manager, that we would try on the basis of trying to do something different in the way that things are planned. We are also at a unique juncture in Kilkenny City with, I suppose, the timing in many ways is very fortunate, with the putting in place, and Denis Malone has been doing superb work on behalf of the council of the next county development plan. And for that reason, the availability of this land at this time, coinciding as it does with the drafting of the new county development plan, could not be more opportune. The decision to bring on board the Royal Institute of Architects of Ireland and a number of their members in this process is again a new approach, which hasn't been tried by other local authorities in Ireland in the past. And we welcome those who have, we've all come to grips with the word colloquium in the last number of months, which is new to our lexicon, but to those people who participated in the process so far, you are hugely respected in your professional, in the professional world of architecture. We thank you for the role you have played so far, and we look forward to hearing over the course of the next number of hours, some of the fruits of that labour and some of the putting in place of the initial ideas. But today is about initial ideas. It's about looking at the possibilities. Let's be very clear, we will not walk out of this hall this evening with a plan for how this site will develop. We are at the earliest stages of the process of how this discussion is going to continue. The role for us as elected members, and for me as mayor, and for Mary as coheric of the county council, is particularly to engage with the public and to ensure that the people who elect us and to give us the right to decide what is a unique opportunity in this city. It is our role to engage with them, and indeed the role of the officials of this council as well. There will be some very far-thinking ways in which that will happen, utilising new technology, utilising the council's website, using webcasting and other similar approaches, again, which haven't been done in the past. And I think, as mayor, I have said one thing since I was elected. I believe that there is an onus on us to engage with the public in a real way. In the era of Facebook and Twitter and instant communication, the old-fashioned methods of saying, "We're putting a document on display and we're opening it for public consultation for two months and you must visit the office and see the plans and send in your ideas on a letter into the council", those methods of doing business are gone. The new methods of doing business is about direct consultation with people as citizens, as is their right, and allowing them whatever mechanism we can so that they can feed in to what is, we hope, a really important decision for the future of our city. So finally, to all of you who have been involved, my thanks. I look forward to a challenging afternoon here of presentations, ideas that I'm sure many of us will agree with wholeheartedly, and ideas which I'm sure will set the hackles of people here on end, and that's the way it should be. Because this should be a challenging and exciting and interactive process which is going to engage us all in the coming days, weeks, months, and indeed, and I'm just going to say one thing, we said at the public meeting which was held with the public, "Má smáil is mheid" is an old phrase in the Irish language. If this takes time, let it take time, but let it be right at the end, having taken time and having been given due consideration and due attention to ensure that what we do is hand on in this site the best possible legacy to our children and our grandchildren and the future generations of Kilkenny, because we have been handed a wonderful legacy. It's our opportunity to put our stamp on the next part of the story of Kilkenny City and to hand it on better than we found it. Gráminam agaith.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. You're all very welcome to the Tower here at Kilkenny Castle for to discuss the development of the brewery site. It's a unique opportunity for us as elected members, but also for the public of Kilkenny City. I'm not going to delay because we have many presentations this evening, so I suppose I'll go straight into introducing the first speaker, which is Martin Colravy, Department of Arts, Heritage and the Gaelic Government Policy and Architecture. Thank you, Martin.
Thank you, Chair, and good evening, Mayor Coheric, Chairman, elected members and members of Kilkenny City Council. I'm delighted that the manager has been able to host this evening, and just to say a few words by way of background to this effectively a pilot approach to an urban design strategy in Kilkenny City. The Department of Arts, Heritage and the Gaelic under the Government Policy and Architecture Implementation Programme this year were delighted to co-sponsor Kilkenny City Council in the development of a pilot design review colloquium on effectively the future planning of this important historic piece of Kilkenny City, the former Diageo Smithic site. One of the key aims of this policy on architecture is to encourage innovative approaches to sustainable urban design, which incorporates and reuses our existing historic places. Promoting qualitative standards in our built environment impacts hugely on how we live, work and learn, and the skills that we use to design and construct our surroundings are fundamentally important to the quality of our life. And indeed, on that note, I really do want to emphasise the huge wealth of information that was generated through this process and indeed the manager taking on this initiative as a pilot and the elected members of Kilkenny City Borough, because certainly this is a new innovative process. It is growing wide, it's growing widely across Europe and the UK, and it's indeed our first piloted approach here. And indeed, also the RIAI is a design or facilitator or the facilitator of the entire process. Just to, by way of information, the Government Policy and Architecture provides the appropriate framework for architecture policy up to 2015 and is led centrally by the Department of Arts, Heritage and the Gaelic. The policy places an emphasis on sustainable development of the environment and urban design while incorporating architectural heritage in a holistic, integrated manner, while encouraging and supporting high-quality, modern architecture. The policy complements and supports the government's wider economic strategy within the programme for government in areas such as built environment research and qualitative place-making. And I suppose just to add, and of course this pilot was sponsored under Action 21 of the Government Policy and Architecture, that's our current policy, we have 45 actions to implement by 2015, we're halfway through, and this is one of the sort of initiatives that we've assisted in terms of getting off the ground. I suppose finally, and just to sort of mention in a sort of a more global sense, why we do these things in this way and why we should always look at, I suppose, it's, somebody described to me an analogy of a master woodcutter, where the more experienced woodcutter will sharpen his blade for three hours and cut a tree down in half an hour, as opposed to quite often getting stuck into felling a tree by sharpening a blade for 15 minutes but spending nine hours cutting the tree down. So preparation in anything is key and having the right approach early on, and I think that's fundamental in looking at how we make decisions about our built environment. Because to no end, what we build today is tomorrow's legacy or tomorrow's heritage, and that are parts of cities that are developed for 50 to 100 years. So it's about taking the time out to make the right decisions in a collaborative, co-joined way and making sure that we look at all options and all options at the very start of a process are valid. There is no such thing as a silly idea at the very beginning of a process. And just to end, I think it's interesting, somebody mentioned, when you get a bunch of architects together to ask questions, somebody says, "Why does an architect answer one question with another question?". And I suppose the answer to that was, "Why shouldn't they?". So effectively, that's what it's about, it's about asking lots of questions before we start. Thank you.
Okay, on Kilkenny County, current fall to Michelle Fagan of the RIAI, who will speak just on the process of the colloquium so far.
Thank you. Just want to say first off that Kilkenny County Council and Kilkenny Borough Council are to be commended, as is Joe Crockett as the city and county manager, for wanting to take the long-term view of Kilkenny City and to ensure that any new development brings the maximum advantage to the city. The identity of Kilkenny City is very strong, based on its historical significance, it's also economically significant within the country, possibly even more so now with the promise of success in agrifoods and the hope that that brings to the rest of us as a nation. Kilkenny City contributes probably disproportionately to the character of Ireland. It is a huge destination for visitors from home and abroad, and to be frank, the wrong type of development could dissipate. That buildings not only address our needs, but they also reflect how we see ourselves and how we think of ourselves and who we think we are. This design review process is an internationally recognised process, and it's a kind of, I suppose, a brainstorming process that's performed by independent, very importantly, independent and impartial panel of experts in the built environment. The aim of the design review is to ensure that the needs of the users and the community are identified and met. The process here in Kilkenny involved identifying a diverse range of independent experts from various perspectives, architects, and I would say most importantly, archaeology and conservation experts, property, economics and engineering, to name but a few. The panel met late last year and were given a briefing about the site, which involved a tour of the site and presentation about the background and history of it and the background and history of the city. A discussion was held and a report was made. The next stage took place in February, and I had the honour of chairing that session. And it was, it was, it was, it was 18, the 18 members of the panel brought their conclusions and thoughts about the site, made a presentation to each other basically, and to the county manager. It was, it was a very interesting day, it was full of great ideas and many, many lightbulb moments. The, although the process is not really about achieving necessarily consensus, there were some common themes as well as interesting approaches. There was a concern for many that the urban structure of the city would be understood and acknowledged in any future approach to the site and the city, in particular the link between the cathedral and the castle, the lanes, the long burbage plots, and the importance of the banks of the river in not only linking space but also as a destination. I mean, it's common in Irish cities and towns that they turn their backs on the river, so, you know, it's, it's normal. There was also an encouragement to go deeper into the understanding of the site in terms of the geography, the geology, history, culture and urban development, and in particular the recent history of the brewery structures. The brewery structures could be seen as a modern archaeology, it was suggested, they're a very big, they're a big resource of material and the use and reuse of it should be fully utilised, their embedded and their embedded energy recognised. The question was, should they be erased? Perhaps reuse and adaptation would be appropriate in this era of scarce resources. There was also the acknowledgement of the traffic in Kilkenny, you know, cars are necessary in the city, and although we'd like to deny them, they are actually necessary certainly in a city with a big hinterland like Kilkenny. And how can they be dealt with in a realistic way? People do love their cars, they do like to drive around the city and, you know, and that was sort of acknowledged in the process. There was also suggestions for uses from the village model to create excitement and variety, to a dense mixed urban, dense mixed-use development, to the possibility of an educational institution and how that could be fed by a creative quarter. And suggestions of how it might all happen, given that there is no rush or pressure at present to build something, which is a really good position to be in. There was a suggestion that perhaps a futures lab, which would be, take the form of a temporary structure, could be erected on the site. People of different disciplines would work together there in situ and evolve some approaches through direct involvement with the community and interested parties and sort of making things happen there on the spot. This sort of development of that idea or a parallel to that idea was the idea that they could allow temporary functions to set up and see what would take, so to speak, to kind of put down a structure, wait and see what happens, what the results would, what results would happen organically. The design review process is an innovative opportunity to look at how we develop our towns. In the past, our development has been driven by single drivers, you know, a supermarket or a factory or a business would come in, identify a site and push to develop it there, and kind of polarising the debate, you're either for it or you're against it. This design review is non-directive, it's inclusive, it is integrated into the community. The results of it will be a full understanding of the potential of the site, a full understanding by everybody of the opportunities. So that when, say, for example, it does happen that a single driver does come in, at least that driver can be directed in a way that where their profit will benefit, will also profit the community. It's a holistic, it's a very holistic process with the wide ranges of backgrounds and expertise being the most important thing. And also, I suppose, to stress the importance of having a design review at the earliest possible moment, as soon as you know there's an opportunity to start the process. The other thing to stress in these times is that it's an extremely cost-effective process in terms of money and also time, most importantly. And as Martin Colravy has already highlighted, it is a goal of the government policy and one of the, of our excellent policy on architecture. It's an excellent process that will reap benefits and should be used for important sites in Ireland. We hope to get the opportunities to work with other local authorities and people who have large, important sites in the future. It's best practice. In this time of economic restraints, the most sustainable approach is to put the right building in the right place in the first place, and if we are going to do something, we should do it once and do it right. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michelle. We'll continue on now to our next presentation, and it's by James Pike of O'Mahony Pike Architectures. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Mayor, council members and ladies and gentlemen. I hope the colloquium process indeed will develop. It has been used extensively here by the Urban Forum with great success on certain national policies, so we wish it well as it develops. I want to cover initially the current planning situation in Kilkenny city centre and then to, and the other developments, which mainly the central access street, which is now pending development, it's very much in stream, and it will affect this Diageo site. This Kilkenny Centre local area plan was developed, we developed it with the city council, Borough Council nearly 10 years ago, and it identified a number of key sites which needed regeneration or indeed major upgrading. But the Diageo site was not included because it was hoped that that would in fact stay in operation, and the last thing that was done at that time was to prepare something which might be feeling to jeopardise that future. So it was omitted. On the other hand, it is a very key element in that whole process. So this map just shows the current parking situation in Kilkenny, which is obviously a key issue, because even as one wishes to restrict traffic through the city and in the city, it is therefore very important to have your sufficient parking provision, both for cars and public transport, in the right places, and yet to try and keep the main artery, the High Street, and other arteries as free of traffic as possible, or possibly in the future pedestrianised. This is really a full strategy of the street access and parking from the local area plan, and it shows the intended inner relief road across the Diageo site. These are the key sites identified, and framework plans were prepared for those sites. So the key sites that affect the Diageo site are the Bateman's Key and Dunnes Stores and that site, the, and then particularly the Mart site and the Padmore and Barns site. Wolfton Street Car Park and John's Green are also very relevant to this particular key site. So this is Bateman's Key, and the intentions there were to see a new frontage about to the, to the river, to create the linear garden or parkway along the riverside, and to create new buildings and to build a multi-storey car park. So it's reconfiguring Dunnes Stores to a certain extent and creating more of a street pattern rather than a very large open car park as of present. The Mart site, key site for the future, with the new access street running across it, a lot of potential for all types of uses, both from residential, office and employment and retail, and connecting very closely through to the Diageo site on the new access street. And there is a small master plan for that site. This is just further the other two small sites that are related to John's Green and the car park site, again, on your way down to the river frontage. So the central access scheme, which is now at an advanced stage and hopefully will go to tender fairly soon, the inner relief road has actually become a central access street, and the idea is that it must be a friendly environment as part of the city centre. This is just showing the different alignments of the street and its main connections. So it's important that we show through the Diageo site, there is a link to Bateman's Key and obviously through to either side to the connecting streets, and that is a general indication of where that could and should be. This is the actual alignment of the, of the new street as now designed. It shows the potential, this is looking at the, on the left side, the Diageo site, and showing a design of potential frontage onto the riverside, leaving room for a park and walkway along the river, and obviously the further enhancement of the same parkway along the other side of the river. It also just shows indicatively possible links and the possible blocks of development which would be possible within the general plan and location of the bridge. So there were a lot of work went into actually deciding the precise alignment in order to preserve as much and make the least impact on the, on the riverside, keeping clear of the mouth of the Brega and preserving other key aspects. And it loops through and connects then through to the, to the main street, and is obviously a key element, a link in the whole city centre. This is a view of what it will look like when it is built, but without the development of the Diageo site. So it gives you an idea, this is a road running through the city over the bridge, and therefore it is very important that we create the right feeling from the buildings itself. So this is just a sketch of potential buildings on the site, a low rise to not interrupt the skyline of the city and key elements like some canisters, but dense enough and with a curve to it, it will indeed, I think, very much enhance the potential of that street to feel like a friendly, pedestrian-friendly space, and will also help to calm the traffic. And this is a picture of the bridge with the site undeveloped, undeveloped on the right, the park on the left, and then a sketch just showing how the buildings might be on the river frontage with a second level. In other words, to have buildings at the waterside and then another level with a deck or a high level. There is in fact a similar, there is an example of this type of thing in Sligo, in the centre of Sligo, which is quite a nice model. This is a picture of the bridge then looking from the centre and from the castle, if you like, with the old swimming pool on the right, and it shows how the bridge will have a separate pedestrian bridge on it, a light structure, which actually leaves the bridge when it reaches the park and heads through the trees, circles through the trees. So it's trying to make, reduce the impact of this new bridge, plus the fact there's considerable clear height under the bridge, so pedestrians will be able to move through with ease. And this is just a further view then from Bateman's Key. Now, a further bridge, pedestrian bridge is now planned and is in a very violent stage, and that will link across really in front of the, just a very small distance from where we're talking about, so it goes over to the library. So that is underway as well. So these, these major new infrastructure will create a really an important, and will affect the site very considerably and open it up to the rest of the city. That's a view then of the, of the brewery and its major impact on the city, the new law courts, which is a great, but, you know, they're part of the potential of the future. And then you see the very large car park, and that's something in the, we hope in the medium term we can change and realign. And then that's the view from the castle, showing again the impact of the site and how key it is in the whole city. I'd just like to, I've just got a few diagrams here of roughly what different types of development take up, and then just discussing a few possible uses and ideas that may come up. First of all, there is a talk of a possible third level institution which will need at least 10,000 square metres. If you built it to three stories, it wouldn't actually take up all that much land, and you can see that against the overall plan of the brewery. Forty-eight houses in tightly packed square, urban square, would actually take up maybe twice the area. But if you had 300 car parks stacked on three floors only, would actually fill quite a small area, the same as it would be needed for 10 buses. the same as it would be needed for 10 buses. Mind you, you could put the car parking over the bus garage if necessary or the bus parking. So that's just giving you a general idea of the type of space requirements in a very general way. And then I'd just like to sort of address some potential uses. First of all, I think it's key that the Diageo site and the Mart site be considered together. They're both interrelated. There are certain uses which don't have to be right on the main street, right in the centre, but need to be close in. And there are other uses which, you know, really should be considered for the Diageo site itself. So the third level institute, if that can be, could obviously, the Diageo site would seem to be an excellent place to locate that. Whereas student housing, other facilities and support facilities could well be on the Mart site. Residential uses are important and I think potentially Kilkenny is already very attractive, I think, to retired people who would be attracted to the centre, whether they're from Kilkenny or indeed from outside. As it is that attractive. So the provision of housing which might be suitable for them is important, as well as obviously family housing. But again, family housing has its demands of space and other uses. There are other types of accommodation for small households, which we need to look at carefully. So it's not just about students, but it's about a lot of people who, you know, really single people or couples who are not having families. That's a very large part of the demographic and we need to look at special ways of housing them, providing good housing for them and the city centre is an ideal location. There is open space and recreation indeed is a key thing. And there is a need for more in the city centre. In fact, discussing city centre by, with a couple of residents recently, they highlighted the fact that while the castle here and the park are excellent facilities, there is very little else in the way of space, open space and indeed other recreational places and facilities. So I think that there is potential for the riverside, which is a key element and is already underway, if you like, on one side. That's a very important part of the plan. And then probably the potential actually for the mouth of the Brega, the Brega itself and the Ferrari site, maybe to create a really good public spaces, which would highlight indeed the history and as well as the geography, if you like, of Kilkenny. Shopping, there was a proposal for Tesco to move into the Mart site. However, Tesco and other supermarkets are taking a major reappraisal of their shops and their shopping. And they're now looking actually at small local stores. You see these proliferating, I know from my experience in the Dublin suburbs, a lot of the inner suburbs, there are more small supermarkets being built and you get three or four or even five of them in one centre, say in places like Terranier or Ranala. So that in fact helps because they want to be more local. What people are doing is going and buying certain things in certain places and shopping around much more than just getting in the car once a week and piling everything in. So that's a key thing and I think that's very favourable to the Diageo site. It would mean that we could talk about citing some of those, particularly perhaps on the central access street and also possibly for the regeneration of the Dunstore side. So that's one key thing. Industries and business, obviously you can attract a third level institute. That's very important and it will bring a lot of spin off potentially from other industries. Obviously dairy has been mentioned and a very key thing and there's already that element in the city and other things to build on. Also possible film and media, I've witnessed people discussing and being involved in project here as they are in so many places now across Ireland. And then perhaps I want to come back to the key thing about parking and the need to provide the right parking in the, so that we can, we use the central access street to the maximum effect, having some of that parking within the Diageo area. But really maximising the potential of the Mart site, but also having the buses having access. So that you can then in fact pedestrianise a substantial part of the city centre. A number of parts of which are very unsuitable to vehicular traffic. So that's just setting the scene perhaps of some of the opportunities. Thank you.
Brimil Mahagut, and just before I move on to the next speaker, Corrin Fierfall to Rive, Ian Hamilton. And Sean, I'd like to welcome Ian, who is currently the chief brewer of the brewery. And I'd like to say that of course, without the foresight both of the Smithic family over a period of hundreds of years and in latter times the Diageo company. And in particular, I would have to say their generosity in terms of their approach to what is about to happen to the site. We wouldn't be here at all today and the company could have taken the attitude which many companies have done in the past to sit on a parcel of land and wait until the time is opportune in terms of development. But instead, I think they've recognised their legacy to the city in handing us the opportunity they've handed us. So Ian to Fall to Rive and to the representative, any other representatives of the company who are here. And indeed also, it should be mentioned that I know that there are a number of former employees of Smithic Brewery here and you're very welcome because you are the people whose work and labour has made it possible for us to be at this moment as well. So on Kate Cantor, Corrin Fall to Rive, Sean Harrington and Sean represents Sean Harrington Architects.
Good evening everybody and thank you very much for inviting me. I'm very pleased to be part of this process. I've been deeply embedded in Kilkenny for the last year and the reason that I have is because I've been involved with Alan Shorwood Associates on behalf of Volta Ireland, looking at the strategic tourism plan for the city. And this has given me a great opportunity to consult with many people, to work with many of Joe's colleagues and the county council and it's been a really fantastic experience to really get to know the city and to see the issues as an outsider, but also to see the potential of the city as well. Just, I want to start with some, I suppose, some conclusions of the strategic plan we did from an architectural and tourism perspective of the city. So I just want to start with a blank plan of the city and you can see the castle on the right, St Cannises on the left. And the reason I wanted to point these two out is these are the two most significant magnets, if you like, that drive the urban structure of the city centre. Linking them is the High Street, Parliament Street, Irish Town, so on that very strong link between the two. And they are the magnets that most tourists know, come to see. And the connectivity between the two is absolutely vital to their understanding and also to citizens' understanding of how the city works. Of secondary importance, but still great importance is the route down from the Rowby Station, across the bridge and then through into the city centre itself. So the key thing, the key strategy really is to try and enhance, improve, bring to life that great access between the two. And what's interesting from an architectural and historical perspective is that access is very similar, for instance, to Edinburgh, where you have a medieval city where you go from the castle down to the palace. And it's a very similar structure, both in terms of the main axis and also the side streets that come off at right angles. The overwhelming impression on arriving in Kilkenny through the city is the traffic. And it's a very pedestrian unfriendly route from the castle to the cathedral. And we welcome very much the idea, once the new bridge is in, that the pedestrian ways will be widened, this will be turned into a one-way street. And I think that would be a great improvement to immediately enhancing the experience for the visitor and the pedestrian in the city centre. So the other thing we wanted to do is, as well as look at the two magnets at either end of this route, is to look at how you enhance the journey along it. And part of that, like I suppose any good high street, is to have interesting things to do and interesting highlights along the route. And I'm not going to go into the details of all of this just now, just a couple of them to show you how we were thinking and how with very small amounts of money, very small interventions, you can unlock the potential of the street. The first one is, you're very familiar with this, I'm sure, an absolutely magnificent building. But at the moment, it's a critical building, but at the ground floor level, very little happens other than the odd busker to really ensure that that is a building which addresses and is used properly by citizens and by visitors. So we thought that it could be a great opportunity to take the back part of the building and to turn it into the new tourism information facility for the city. So something which is right out there, something which is very visible, something which is lightweight and clearly modern, but doesn't take away from the beautiful building that's there already. Moving along, the next really interesting place is, as you move down towards Parliament Street, is this site at the end here where the trees are. Now this is really interesting for the sake of today, I suppose for two reasons. One reason is that this is the moment you lose sight of St Cannises Cathedral and the tower at this point here. So for a visitor, it's disorientating. You're not quite sure where to go next if you're heading towards the cathedral at the end. The other thing that's interesting about this site is that it's at the crossing of the river. And it's also the threshold of the way into the Diageo site. So it's an absolutely critical moment, both for how you understand the access from the cathedral, from the cathedral all the way through there at that threshold moment. Once you get beyond that, you can see the cathedral and you can see the tower and you're reorientated again in a clearer way. So what we wanted to do here is to pick up on the aesthetic or the nature, the vertical nature of the tower, to remind you what you're going towards and to do something which is an exciting new structure that's not a building. We thought in our discussions, one of the most exciting potential things for Kilkenny City is to turn it into a garden city and I'll come on to that a little bit further on. So we looked at various things around the world, where you have vertical gardens. And we thought it could be a very exciting moment at that point to have a vertical garden. So we've designed a tower which is made of timber and it's got an observation platform at the top. And it's a little kind of memory or an introduction to the idea of the round tower, but it's a planted tower. And it's irrigated by a water wheel that's in the river next door, pumping water naturally up to the top and irrigating the garden down. This could be a major attraction in its own right. And at night time then it becomes a beacon and it draws you down to that part of the street so that you can then turn the corner and understand that the cathedral is a little bit further on. The other thing that is of wonderful potential in the city is the river. And the river, the majority of the river in the city centre is directly parallel with the High Street. But yet it's divorced from High Street. So we want to think first of all, how could the riverside develop as a great Garden of Ireland, an urban garden all the way along the river in quite an intense way, to make it almost a tourist attraction in its own right and a great facility for citizens? And we must also bear in mind the bridges, a new bridge coming along, as Jim has just explained, a new pedestrian bridge, which is one in the middle, and also a potential other pedestrian bridge connecting across to the county council gardens from the walkway along the side of the castle, there at the right-hand end. So that all enhances the usability and the popularity and accessibility of the waterside. This is the million dollar view in Kilkenny, in my opinion, and it's one which very few people see. You have to go down there and have a picnic in the summertime, there's no immediate path along the side of the river. There's no reason to go down there, there's a railing which is aggressive to the river and so on. And you're cut off from the rest of the town by the Dunstores car park. And if you think of other places in the world, this is in Loire Valley in France, this is castles in Chinon, for instance. Most incredible views of the castle next to the river. And it's not wishful thinking, I don't think, to think that Kilkenny could have that kind of powerful image of a great river, wonderful river walks and the castle in the distance. So for inspiration, we went backwards and looked at historical maps. And you can see here that there's the plot lines of the buildings which are along the High Street, run down to the river at right angles. So in other words, the gardens went down to the river historically as part of the houses which are along the High Street. And we thought that if you could develop a linear, quite intense garden along the river frontage. So we looked at other examples and this is the recently redeveloped waterside keys in Bordeaux City, which is a wonderful example of how you can really make an intense landscape experience, a beautiful park along the river. And it's very successful and it's completely transformed the appreciation of the frontage, the waterfrontage in Bordeaux. Then there's also an incredible interest in the country for show gardens. And if you think of the popularity of Bloom in this country and many other festivals throughout the world, including the Chelsea Flower Show, you get the most amazing show gardens. And we thought it would be just the most incredible opportunity to collect them. In other words, to think of, to find the winners every year or some really attractive gardens and to invite them to relocate their gardens in plots which are along the river frontage to, in a way, recreate the ends of all those medieval gardens that went down to the garden and then combine that with a boardwalk or a walkway all the way down that facilitates and encourages people to be at the waterfront and to see down the river to the castle. So here is a very simple plan of what I'm talking about, quite narrow plots. Show gardens that could be collected over a period of even 20 years, it doesn't even all have to happen at once. And so you transform something like this into something a little bit more like this. So that until buildings are built on the right-hand side, which is one of Jim's proposals earlier, you could plant a row of tall poplar trees which enclose the river, give it a sense of place and help to screen the car park from the river frontage. So this is quite a formal proposal, if you like, something which is highly designed, something which is a boardwalk, which gives that great view down to the end of the castle and gives a fantastic facility. And it's relatively cost-effective because it can be done over a period of time. So the next question then is, how do you join the access of the High Street with this great Garden of Ireland, which is along the river frontage? And I think this is really the kernel of why we're here today. And it's not just the Diageo site, but it's also eventually the Dunstores car park site, which is there on the right-hand side, the right-hand question mark, as it were. And if you look at the way the urban pattern, the urban grain, which is very distinctive to Kilkenny, earlier on I mentioned the medieval pattern of the main High Street and the right-angled laneways, which are of a minor nature. Quite intense, quite small scale, but have a very distinctive characteristic for Kilkenny. How you might develop that idea and continue that grain in a natural way between the High Street and the river, the way it previously was? So that instead of having something like this, you have something which is much more of a human scale, much more intense. And it doesn't mean the car park has to go, it's just the car park needs to be incorporated into the scale of a new development on that site and also on the Diageo site. So again, going backwards, looking at the old map, you can see there, there's a series of line, the plot lines. And those plot lines are generated by the width of the buildings and so on along the High Street. So imagine continuing them today in some kind of urban grain down to the river to give you a kind of footprint or a ghost of how to develop that over the coming years. So it might look something like this, just in terms of plot lines. And along those plot lines, there's a paths and laneways and streets going down to the river. And that's just a great way of connecting the activity of the High Street down to the new activity along the waterfront where you have this great park in as many ways as possible to get that permeability between one axis and the next axis, which is the river, which is parallel. And I think then combined with the riverside walks and all the other enhancements along the High Street, that could create a really intense urban experience. And we believe it's the footprint, the inspiration about how this might be developed over the coming years. And I would say that just one final thought, this is the most brilliant time to be doing this because at a time of economic recession, it's the time to be thinking about how one might develop and to really, as other speakers have said, do it properly, take the time to consider it and to have a footprint to develop into the future. Thank you very much indeed.
I'd now like to call on Anthony Reedy of Reedy Architects, please.
I would also like to say, as Sean has said, that it's good that we're looking at this at this time because I think times of reflection are often the best times. Cities grow incrementally and the more thought given to it, the better. Forgive my... Yeah. It's appropriate that we're having this event here. One of the most august holders of the office, Duke of Ormond, was actually one of the people who brought back to Ireland the notion of an urban tradition, of the importance of public buildings, great public buildings, great public space. Some of you will know, he went abroad during the Cromwellian Revolution and he spent 12 years in the court of Louis XIV with the King Charles II. But in that time, he absorbed a lot of the understanding of the sun king's own appreciation of the importance of great architecture and great public realm. And when he came back to Ireland, he gave to our capital city, as he was viceroy. And when he came back to Ireland, um, he gave to our capital city, as he was viceroy. He gave it the Royal Hospital, probably his great, greatest public building. He also gave, gave it the keys. He was the one who persuaded Humphrey Jervis not to build the buildings with back gardens facing the river. But the first on these islands, he made Dublin a city to face the river and gave it one of its characteristic urban qualities. Uh, it was much later in fact that London was to do the same. Um, but oddly enough, while he did create in, in the, the great urban space that, that is the parade in Kilkenny, he never in his own city had the opportunity to turn the city to the river. And as I said at the February meeting, the real significance of Diageo leaving this site is it gives us at the beginning of the 20th, 21st century, the opportunity for the city to finally face the river, which is a wonderful opportunity. And it's a wonderful and unique opportunity in these times. The other thing I'd like to say about Kilkenny is that it has a great educational tradition. And many of you may not know, but James II, besides giving a charter as a city to Kilkenny, he also gave it a charter as a university. Kilkenny College was to be the University of St Canis. Now, for various historic reasons, that didn't happen. And it's a great pity that in the 20th century, when many other places maybe much less deserving were to, uh, attain university status or, and to attain universities, that Kilkenny was passed over. And many of you here will know the political reasons that for a long period, really since the end of the 1960s, Kilkenny has not had a cabinet minister, uh, a full cabinet minister. And the reality of Irish politics is that that narrow, uh, focus means that it didn't get things that it rightly deserved. But I believe that this site may be an opportunity to redress that balance. Perhaps as an outreach campus rather than, it's unlikely, given the complexity and competition between universities, it's unlikely we're to get a new university now. Third thing I'd like to say about Kilkenny is that more than, more, perhaps after Dublin, Kilkenny, more than any other Irish city, actually has an international identity. That may be due to Kilkenny beer, but I think it's much deeper than that. It may be due to the children's nursery rhymes. But most people know about Kilkenny. And I think that that was proven when, to, un- until last year, only Kilkenny won an Academy of Urbanism Great Town Award. Now, to give you some idea of what that required, there are roughly 235, 240 academicians. Only 11 of those are Irish. So to win, to win that accolade in that competition with, with little, and, and given that you're going to have an amount of national voting, was an incredible affirmation of Kilkenny's identity. And I believe that that identity is something with this site that can actually give Kilkenny the opportunity, which it missed in the industrial revolution. Remember in the South East of Ireland, before the industrial revolution, this was the city. The place down the river on the end of the north was just the port. The industrial revolution made Waterford more important, but this is really the urban, the great urban centre in the South East. And in some ways, this site, I believe, and Kilkenny's identity in the modern era, um, has the potential to make it a different sort of, a, 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 a modern, uh, a, a third generation, uh, uh, modern city, built on its, uh, uh, medieval roots. I show all these companies here and those of you from Kilkenny will recognise them, but ju- just to give you some idea of Kilkenny on the pecking order of the IDA, it isn't even at the races. Uh, I think it's ninth place. I mean, such wonderful places as Athlone, uh, Dundalk, uh, Sligo are all above in rankings for the IDA. So Kilkenny doesn't get much of a look in when it comes to inward investment. One of the interesting phenomenons I've certainly seen notice in recent years is that Kilkenny, in spite of all that, is actually winning, uh, industry and business. It's mainly, uh, financial services and some other specialist, uh, areas. But the reason people are coming here is very simple. When you talk to these companies, they're coming here because Kilkenny is a good place to live. It is a, it has all, all the attributes of a much bigger city, but it's actually small and compact and very livable. And I now come to, uh, just the phenomenon of our age, really over the past relatively short time, no more than 20 years. In fact, someone would say no more than 15 years. We've seen in Silicon Valley, we've seen in, in some cities in Europe, we've actually seen, uh, a huge amount of knowledge industry growing. And knowledge cities are, are a particular type of city. Not all cities, uh, have the attributes that will make them a knowledge city. Um, one of the interesting things about Dublin of the last 10 years, no more than 10 years, is that the IDA never planned what has happened. And we call it Silicon Docs and many other acronyms. The IDA were planning to build buildings out of, outside Dublin. It was the knowledge industries chose to build in the city. Why do they do that? They do that because other knowledge cities, other knowledge industries live in small cities and small towns in the Silicon Valley or in San Francisco or in other, in Copenhagen or in Berlin. Um, it's my proposition to this group here and, uh, that I really believe that Kilkenny has the attributes of a knowledge city. It now has the place to attract those companies to come to. They're not going to go to a business park in Lockboi, but they will come to a central city area. And I think it's one of the uses that could be an interesting, long-term advantage for this site. I said at a previous meeting that, um, I think this is the wrong site to be putting large scale retail. There are lots of sites in Kilkenny you can put large scale retail. This is a really important site. And the uses that go here should be about the long-term viability of, of, of Kilkenny, the long-term improvement of the quality of life in Kilkenny and, uh, something that actually allows it to be sustainable way into the 22nd century. Just some characteristics of a creative city, because many cities don't have all these things, but I think Kilkenny has them all, but just to go to them. Uh, it has a political and public framework. It has, certainly has distinctiveness, diversity. Uh, I mean, I, I think there is a truly, uh, great, there's a greater pride in Kilkenny people's view of their city than any other city I know, including my own native Dublin. Uh, I mean, there's a really deep-seated passion about the, the, the city and about the uniqueness. Um, it's certainly a place of openness and trust. Uh, and this is, goes back to Richard Florida's notion of that, um, it's not a unicultural place. It's a place that can accept all, all creeds, all, all races, uh, a, 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 all persuasions to its heart. And Kilkenny has been doing that for a long time. Um, I think there is, uh, strategic leadership at both managerial level, but also political level. And now you have the one missing piece in, in the link and that is you have a seat at the cabinet table. I don't think it's, uh, it certainly has the talent and, and I mean, it's attracting talent, which is something that many other cities can't do. And I illustrated that earlier. And I think we can encourage more types of talent. Communication connectivity and network has always been one of its heart. This in many ways was also, in spite of losing industry down river, this was always the business centre of much of the South East. I see that growing and it is growing almost in spite of the IDA. I hope there's no one from the IDA here that would very annoyed me. Uh, I've said already, it has won international accolades for its place and place making. And that tradition carries on through the local authorities and through individual architects working here. I think there is a great sense among those working here, among those living here, about the quality of what they have compared to other cities. It's certainly one of the most livable cities I know. It's the only city I know that has the attributes of a city where you can go home for your lunch or your dinner, as they say in Kilkenny. And finally, it is a professional place. It's, it, it can deliver, uh, in so many ways. Things get done here and have always, there's been a tradition way back from the founding of the Design Centre, right to the present day, of things being done here at a progressive rate. Um, I just want to touch briefly on other, I, I, I could have taken small cities, but you will all know some of these and I just want to reflect on them. The Paris of Houseman, the, the new town of Edinburgh by Craig, the Sirda's greed in Barcelona and Central Park by Frederick Law Olmsted in, uh, Midtown Manhattan. They were all grand gestures. The gesture was made and it took many years for the city to follow. What I'm going to propose now is that we should merely make the gesture, to make the places, to make the network. Uh, as, uh, Houseman, uh, did in many of his grand projects, he merely put a building on the corner of streets and let the streets fill in long after he'd left. Um, I suggest that that's maybe, the same was true of Sirda. I suggest that that's what we should be thinking about doing here, particularly in these straitened times. Um, I, I really believe that what this should be for Kilkenny is a creative quarter. And by that I mean that it has a mix of uses from culture to arts, to knowledge, industry and, and, and knowledge business, to small-scale retail, not large-scale retail, uh, to a micro brewery. Essentially, it's mixed use. And in fact, I'm not particularly, and you also keep the protective structures. I'm not particularly worried and I don't think today is the forum to talk about where things go. Place making is about the grander plan. The re- if you do that, the rest will follow. Um, so I'm, I'm suggesting that what my, Kilkenny might do, this is an entry, we, we, we've been looking at this for a long time. We were premiated. We won the Urban Design Award for a competition way back in 1998, the RAI ran. We didn't win the competition. Uh, we spent so much time looking at the city, we didn't spend enough time looking at the building. But we've been thinking about this, uh, the, the site adjoining this site, which is the Dunn site for some time. But in reality, one needs to look at the totality, uh, from John's Bridge, uh, to Greensbridge, uh, or the New Bridge rather. And that, that whole quarter needs to be looked at in its whole. And I'm suggesting that the action that should arise out of this, and I plead with the manager and, and, uh, the mayor and, uh, and the co here look, that what we should do now is begin a process of creating a framework because all, these are merely ideas. These need to be tested in detail. They need to be worked on based on evidence-based research to take it to another level before we arrive at a, an appropriate plan. But I'm going to suggest 10 actions that we might do within that, uh, framework. The first one, and others have referred to it, is I think it's critical and we do what he would have done were he alive today. The Duke of Ormond would have put a street, a street onto the river with the landscaping that Sean Harrington has, uh, suggested. He would have turned the city to the river, which is one of its great attributes. The next thing that we should do, and these are things we could do now because they don't cost that much to do, but they will, they will change the perception of Kilkenny. They, it, to those who are considering, um, doing things, as in Houseman's Paris, as in Sirda's Barcelona, when people see the network of spaces and streets and maybe one or two, uh, initial buildings, the rest will follow. So I'm not suggesting this is the specific network, but I do agree with Sean that it needs to build on, uh, the, uh, the, the, the network of the past. I do suggest a slight difference from Sean in that I think we maybe on this site need to, we need to reflect the urban grain, but I think in the same way as Houseman with Paris, uh, or, um, the, the Edinburgh Georgians, uh, or Sirda with Barcelona. I think we need to change the scale to reflect the century we're in. But I'm not suggesting a mega scale and that's why I say big box buildings are not the building here, but an appropriate scale of streets and squares. I think a very important part of this, and I hope Margaret Heffernan has somebody listening here, and I hope you've conveyed the message back. But I think one of the worst aspects of current Kilkenny is the car park there. No, it's from a different era. But a really important part of the jigsaw is that that, of course, there needs to be car parking there, but it doesn't need to be in full frontal view. Um, a very important part, as we mentioned with others, is, is the, the links, uh, pedestrian bridges. I'm suggesting that one should be to the Carnegie Library or the space around it and the other further up the key. Um, but I think that, that permeability in Kilkenny is important. I think the other thing that that would do in the longer term for Kilkenny, it would open up longer term prospects uh, on the Bateman Key side of the river and links to the Martin, to McDonagh Junction and all of that, that, uh, area to the west of, uh, um, John Street. The other thing that I think that this should do, and I, I, I've suggested places for public ra- public space here. And many of us would agree that the Friary should be one of those, but the form of it might be different and needs a detailed design. But I'm suggesting other places, but it might not be these. But I think we're all, I think many of us would agree that there should be a series of, um, elements of public realm. And these might be places where there would be an aspiration that when Kilkenny yet again brings the, uh, Hallowed Cup back to the city, for yet another, another all Ireland, that this, this might be one of the places or a series of places where that's celebrated. Um, another very important part of this, and this is why I think we need to look at this holistically. I think Kilkenny's High Street needs to be pedestrianised. I've had an office in Kilkenny for many years, we're now down the end of it in Dean Street. But, but, but Kilkenny would hugely improve. And I believe that the traders of the city, if there was adequate access to the city and adequate car parking, and that could occur on, on, on the, on, on the riverfront, that, that would hugely improve the quality of the existing fabric of the city. Um, and, and, uh, I'm really suggesting that on a phased basis, that those, that network be put in place. As much as the budget will allow, the more the better. And as I say, there might be one or two key buildings, signature buildings that are, are, are almost seed corn to, for, for further development. Um, the other thing I think that is very important, because I don't think you're going to get help from the IDA, as I said, I mean, we work a lot with FDI. We're, we're currently working with Google and Boston Scientific and many other knowledge industries. Kilkenny doesn't get a chance. I think Kilkenny actually has to for itself. Um, and I think it's, it, it, it can market itself very well. I think it, as I said earlier, it has an international brand. And I believe that if you had a quarter like this, Kilkenny could be surprised at what it, it could give itself a lasting and sustainable future for its children and for its grandchildren and great grandchildren. And it could become a model of a smaller city in European terms, competing as Dublin is competing with bigger neighbours. Kilkenny could be competing with Dublin, bigger neighbours, because it is a great place to live and it, it has a great future. Thank you.
Uh, Crimina Maha Gutt Tony, I think we've got a sense of the kind of passion that, uh, one can have for the city when one has the good fortune to marry, marry a Kilkenny woman. Uh, and could I also welcome, by the way, um, Paul Smidick, uh, who's, who has joined us, uh, who of course is of the family, uh, that created so much, uh, of, as I said earlier, uh, of, uh, the legacy that we're looking at today. Um, on Kild, Chaintor Leda, Niall McCullough from McCullough Mulvan, architects again, no strangers to Kilkenny City.
Like my colleagues, I've been lucky enough to have an opportunity to work in the city in the last couple of years. And, um, if anything, what I've been doing in, in working is digging down, digging into the city and looking at it in detail. And I suppose, just what I'd like to talk about is, um, when you dig down and you look at the city in detail, I think ideas come to you. And ideas about what you might do about the Diageo site come to you as well. I think the, the site has everything going for it. It's got, it's got linkage, it's got linkage to the city. Um, it's got a star character. It's got the, it's got St Francis on it. It's got the river. Um, it's also got scale, which most, which most, um, sites or denderd cities don't actually have. Um, it's got, it's potentially a key to unlock the rest of the city. It's big enough to have a wider influence beyond the city. This, this is something that could be, could be looked at abroad in the rest of Ireland. What you do here is something that I think will be of greater importance. And in terms, um, I want to talk about ideas about the city, first of all. And if you go back, as some of my colleagues have done, just very quickly, you've got an inland city without the sea, very unusual in, in, in Ireland, without dramatic landscape. So people make landscapes of buildings. They make landscapes of towers. They make landscapes of castles. That's true of the whole county. And secondly, as you mentioned before, the river, and if you look at this overall plan of the current city, much, much enlarged, then you see the old city in the centre of it. The river is threaded right through it. And the character of the river and the open nature of the river and its beautiful relationship with the existing city is still intact. And that's something that I think is extremely important and very closely regarded by most people. And also when you look at old images of the city, you get this, this sense that people all through history have understood that relationship with the city and that they've built their monuments, they've built this image of the city on the river to be seen with the green space in front of it. And just other ideas, which is the city itself, again, has been alluded to, the streets and the lanes, is not a haphazard event. It's an idea. It was designed as a city with the castle facing the cathedral, the other churches, the city walls, the rectangle and the river. Somebody thought that out and it's been added to over time. It is, it's, it's, it's a cultural and intellectual object, not something to be, not something to be just frittered away or wasted away. And if you go close by, again, Edinburgh has been mentioned, you get this, this great view of Edinburgh Castle. And when you put Edinburgh and Kilkenny together, you get this very interesting understanding of cities in this part of the world where you get this kind of extended town plan between castles and cathedrals and the town extended between them. And just as an example, when you see what happened in Edinburgh in the eighteenth century, when they extended the the old traditional city on the hill, they built themselves a completely new city across um eh across a across a green space, and it had it had it had an idea about it, it was this wonderful rational opposition to all the little narrow medieval lanes, and the city of Edinburgh grew entirely on this duality between the two things. And the only point I take out of that is, that's not going to happen in Kilkenny because the Diageo site is right beside the city, is that whatever happens should have its own integrity and should have its own idea about what it is. And if you go to the site itself close up and 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 you actually start to dig down on it beyond generalities, and you start to nose around the actual details of it, it has all that layering and all that character of the rest of the city writ small, and if you go back to to Roke's map in the eighteenth century, you can see the field boundaries, you can you can see the garden plots that have been mentioned before, you can see the outline of St Francis, the wall is there, the old eh the old the old city wall runs down right through the site, and those traces are still there under the tarmac of the Diageo site, they're not gone away. So I suppose in some ways, they might be a generation or the bones of a generation of of an idea about what you might do. Um it's got big bone scale and long-distance views, it's got this wonderful, close relationship with the rest of the city, you can vanish down a lane here and be lost down in the new site. Just think of all the all the potential drama and excitement and mystery of just wandering off down that. It's also got the Friary itself, which is which is actually a wonderful monument, and I think one of the things that should be done, actually, as one of the earlier aspects of this, is actually to properly excavate that site while the time is um while the time actually allows that to happen. So if you if you actually look at it in detail and and you start to close in on what would happen here, I think there are certain things which become very clear, the river is going to have to be very clearly highlighted in it, the city wall along the river, the site of the abbey, and then the relationship between the eh between the existing city and the site, and also the way that the new road, which comes um which comes into it, the exact way that that's knitted in, particularly when it comes up closer to the cathedral, to 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 make the truth of its urban character manifest, is going to be very carefully designed so that it doesn't feel like um a kind of a a large through route with a few houses on both sides, but that that area that I've circled there, I think has, is a particular focus of interest and discussion. And in the wider context, again, that that whole issue widens out to the whole city, whatever happens here has ramifications with regard to the view of the castle, the view of the Evans Home across the river, the view of the cathedral, what you do here will impact on those monuments, and it what what those monuments can actually impact on what's happening on the site. And I think there are a number of ways that development could go here, and like Tony, I'd agree, it's not the time for discussing the detail of that, but I think you could start to think, um if you take the circles on 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 the on the image there, the relationship between the new road and the city, the way that that's knitted in, the back of the existing old city and the new development is a place for small and intense urban places, which are kind of a crossover zone between the new and the old. The site of the Friary itself, which again, I think is sitting like like a a large fact in the middle of this, and is is maybe needs more thought about it and its consequences and its width, and the extent of buildings that are, I that I would imagine are actually under the ground on that, could could have a square in front of it down to the river, and maybe the space in it could be open space or could actually be built over, but it should be recognised in the morphology of what of 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 what happens later. And then extending that to the rest of the city, um maybe you could think eh about a grander s- a grander kind of a scenography, where you built, um as Tony was saying, a whole key down to the river, you completed the medieval city, and maybe you match the castle by a large public building up beyond the new bridge on the other side, some something that creates a whole eh a whole character to that grand vista. Um or you could go back, I think, to the to the view of the river again, and back to the this image of 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 faith in the in this green thread that runs through it, and just think of it a slightly different way, which is wouldn't be hugely different in terms of the in terms of the increment of development, but instead of thinking of 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 this eh extension to the city, I'm thinking of Diageo and the car park site adjacent to it as simply filling in down to the river, that you thought of the development as something which was actually attached to the old city, which was almost like the end of it or the back of it, which was built up quite densely, with then buildings standing in in more in in more open ground, running eh eh down to the river. And I I think that um in many ways, the discussion and the debate about this as it develops will be precisely about the size of that green increment, precisely about how much of that is left, or how how wide or how narrow that actually ends up being. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I don't have very much to say because the purpose of today's forum is for the very distinguished architects and presenters that we've had to outline their thoughts and their ideas and their creativity, which they've done within with great wisdom and with great generosity, I think that has to be acknowledged, eh and I really, myself, I'm hugely impressed by the um the thought process and the depth of wisdom and experience and skill that we've seen today. I think it is also fair to kind of, when you stand back and and see, well, where are we going with all this? Um the first thing, I guess, is to say, well, what does Kilkenny do? What is it about? And for me, Kilkenny, eh as I've come to understand it better eh eh over the years, eh and I'm actually in my sixth year in Kilkenny at this time, it's amazing how quickly time has flown, is that Kilkenny expects excellence as a matter of course. A quiet delivery of excellence, not in a kind of a eh a loud way as my com- as my colleague, as my confers and Cork might do, they always talk about how great Cork is, eh and they'll bore you to tears about it, eh and Cork is a great place. Eh but Kilkenny is equally a great place. Um and I think Tony really caught it in terms of saying it really is an international city in terms of its aspiration and how it delivers. And going back to the Duke of Ormond and sort of seeing the contribution that the Duke of Ormond made in his own castle, and the contribution that had been made by the different churches in particular, eh I've been very struck by the churches in Kilkenny, all of them have great imagination and great energy in them and great aspiration. And Kilkenny is really a city of churches and lanes and obviously very big castles and so on and so forth, and very big iconic buildings, and that's really how I understand Kilkenny myself. Um and in terms then of saying, okay, if Kilkenny is about excellence on an international understanding and scale and so on and so forth, and also being to the forefront of urban design and the best-in architecture, best-in public space, best-in churches, best-in, fill in the blanks, food, dairy, agri-business, financial services, retailing, et cetera, small shops, frontage, beautiful river, housing, et cetera, et cetera. So that really is what Kilkenny is about, and that's really why we have gone down the route of this particular process, that when we were trying to think of a process that would bring in a very wide range of opinion to what is a very complex question, how do you develop a site of this importance? And the decision is one of national importance because Kilkenny is also a national place, it fits into a na- to a, that when people talk about Ireland, they talk about Dublin, and they'll talk about Kilkenny, and they'll talk about Cork and Galway, but it's in that language and in that kind of understanding is where Kilkenny positions. So therefore, this particular site is of national importance, and it is really important that in view of the great foresight of the elected representatives in making a profound decision to buy the site, that we now move on to a situation of having profound thought and profound expertise from a variety of people. So that's why, rather than going for an international competition to get us one solution for this site, we said at this very early stage, before we've even thought about what the right answer is, let's ask the right question by the right people, and also perhaps get some indications as to what the right answers might be. And we have got that today, in my view. The pity of it is that actually we weren't able to ask all the other presenters who were there at the colloquium to have time and space to give their impressions eh and their views and their imaginations to us as well, because we just, the format wouldn't allow it. We just knew that with 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 the special meetings of councils, there's only a certain amount of time, certain that in relation to a public meeting, there's only a certain amount of concentration that people have, it really is only about an hour and a half or two hours, and you can't be going on for hours about it. But equally, eh and we got great stuff from the other contributors, and some of them are here, Pat McCormack on the property side, James Nugent on the property side, Carl Kent eh from eh who's a planner and an architect, Dennis Malone, John Mulholland, Philip O'Neill, the planning team from our own council, put in great effort into this and added to the process. Now, the question that we've been asking ourselves is, how do you convey the passion that each of the four speakers that we have today, how can we convey that in a in a kind of a real live way, rather than just presenting a pack of ideas or a presentation pack, which is what we have, that that's kind of in some respects a kind of dead enough? So we've come up now with a new process eh to make that happen, we we have asked all of the other contributors, and they have all agreed, that they will be filmed making their presentation, and we will put that on the Kilkenny County Council website, and all of Kilkenny and all of Dublin, or people from Kilkenny across the world can plug in and tap on and see what everybody said with the same passion and conviction and creativity direct to the viewer. And that likewise, in the website, that people will then be able to give their obs back, so that then as the elected representatives think about this, and as the city thinks about this, and the county thinks about this, over the course of the coming months, there's no rush on us, and the elected representatives have been very strong in this, let's take our time, let's think about this before the elected representatives come to their decision as the democratically mandated authority for zoning and design and development in the city. But equally, this site is of the people of Kilkenny, and one of the key understandings that we have to have is that that this, whatever solution is adopted here, can't be some drop-in solution from from somewhere else that the people of Kilkenny are not, have no input into or no relationship to. This, whatever comes out of this has to be of Kilkenny, and hasn't Kilkenny done a great job itself over the course of the past couple of hundred years, better than anybody else or anywhere else in Ireland? So that has been one of the wonderful gifts that we've had, and that we now have the responsibility to continue with over the course of the next couple of hundred years. Normally, people are used to me saying that this decision is a hundred years or fifty years or fifty-year decision. But the decision we're about, that the elected representatives will make on behalf of the people of the city and county of Kilkenny, this is a decision that's going to have a five-hundred-year impact or longer. So it's a very, very profound time, eh and therefore, we do need as much input from as many people as we possibly can, and then so that the elected representatives can make a wise choice, and that's really the key. It would be appropriate also to acknowledge eh in acknowledging the the decision of the city and the county to buy the site, to also acknowledge the position that was taken by Diageo itself. Eh now, the speaker and the mayor, I think, and the coherer have referred to the fact that Diageo could have gone, that Smithick's could have gone down a different route, they did not do that. They acted with great corporate responsibility and social responsibility, and they have helped us to continue the legacy of craft and of best-in eh what we are now doing, and I and I hope that we can, and I think that people have rightly acknowledged the Diageo contribution and the staff over the years and so on and so forth. I think it's also appropriate to acknowledge the role of the Department of the Environment because we all need advice and counsel as to how something should be developed. Eh and in talking to various people, one of the thoughts we had, as I said initially, was to go to to international competition with this, which is the accepted route. Eh and I spoke to a few people, Martin Colreavy is one who's been to the forefront in developing the architectural policy, and Niall Cusson, who's a principal planning advisor in the department, and they said, yeah, okay, look, that'll kind of work, but to be honest, they weren't that enthusiastic. And I went away and said, well, what are we going to do now? Because it's clear to me that, okay, this is a kind of a ho-hum approach, a standard approach is not appropriate for this particular site, it has to be something really new. And on that basis, then, we went back to the elected representatives, and we went back to the department and said, look, we have a new solution, to get in advice from a lot of very, very creative people, multidisciplinary people, not just architects, not just planners, but commercial people, archaeologists, people who are good at energy, our own engineering team, our own admin people, our own elected representatives eh who will be ultimately making the decision, as I mentioned earlier, and who've already made a very profound one. And we went then to the RIAI, the Royal Institute of the Architects of Ireland, and said, look, could you help us with this process? And thankfully, Michelle Fagan as the president, John Grabey as her chief executive, Catherine Megan, all said, yes, let's give this a try. It's not been done anywhere else, this is the very first time to try it out, and we've learned from the process. And one of the things that we've learned is, one of the things that we got slightly wrong, is, as I said, that we would have loved to have all of the contributors saying their piece with all their passion and all of their conviction upfront directly, but I think we know we'll be able to overcome that with the technology eh and the web and so on and so forth, and it'll take us a week or two to get that up, but the speakers that you'll have seen today will be on the web on Monday morning, and you'll be able to click on what they had to say, and you'll be able to click on their presentations, and you can think about it, and I think that's a great thing. Now, let's see, what else have I noted down here that I should, people I should be thanking? Um so, yes, eh I've thanked all the contributors and I've acknowledged them who are here eh for for lending us their creativity and their imagination. Um and obviously, there was also a wide variety of thought from what was said, we're we're going to hear very shortly now from Shelley, who's just arrived, eh so I can stop talking. Eh but there was a very wide range of philosophies, not just, I mean, we've seen kind of the very accessible stuff here, but we also got some very, very good thinking and philosophy from from the other contributors. Um and I think that's really, we are, what's going to be of value to bring those thoughts back and for you to be able to see them directly. Um and that's all I want to say. Thank you very much.
We now have the presentation eh by Shelley, and you're very, very welcome, Shelley.
Eh I hope I'm worth waiting for, I just said to Joe I would happy to be dropped if I was too late, but I I'm really happy to be here because I think this process is is really important in terms of what's happening in Ireland, and because there it's so relevant, what what the issues that are being raised here in Kilkenny on your site. And um I haven't been involved in any direct way in Kilkenny like many of the previous speakers who would have made proposals and actual plans, so I'm really kind of an outsider ranging and ranging around a a series of problems which I see relate to Kilkenny but not just to Kilkenny, relate to eh the development of of Irish towns in general. I love this quote, eh "The art of seeing with innocence" by Luis Barragan, eh Mexican architect, where he says that we architects need to learn the art of seeing with innocence. I also love a quote by Manuel de Solomarales, a Spanish architect and urban thinker, and he talks about the skin of cities, and that cities need to be observed with the attention of a detective who scrutinizes the tiniest clues in its wrinkles. He says, "We must find the possibility of difference, even within the uniformity imposed by the functional and economic systems of modern cities." When I look or when we look at the Diageo site, and this is a very rough eh sketch, I think what's really important is the way that we map places. Um when we see this site, we look at a series of maybe you could say eh dislocated elements, a collage of historic ruins, the empty brewery, the scraggy backs of the Parliament Street buildings, tarmac-addened surfaces, car parking, and the wonderful river Nor eh frontage. And if we really map and record a site, seeing with innocence, with curiosity, getting the measure not just of the physicality of the ground, but mapping the activity, dead or alive, the energy above and below ground, the history and the memory of the place in the consciousness of the community, trying to map the past and the present in a way that might suggest the future, we would then, I think, see unexpected possibilities. The immediate reaction of us as designers is to clean it all up, to make a master plan, a coherent place, a new development, but we've learned that design alone is not enough to make a successful place. To make a new place or transform an existing one, one has to really stop and think, which is what you're doing here this evening, to think, what is the driving force? What is the vision for this? What is the vision for this place? Sometimes it's a question of growing a place over time, a question of urban acupuncture, balancing the positive and the negative. In a time of recession, we need to find new ways of regenerating towns. Building is not always the answer. New building of quality is really important. But perhaps we need to combine the new with the ability to recycle resources, reuse and convert, make imaginative viable interventions which will act as a catalyst for the release of new energies, social, commercial and cultural. Everybody tells us we have to ask the right questions in order to get the right answers. So how can this site, with its evacuated brewery and buildings, be reused even in the short term? What infrastructures exist which could feed another function or use? The site has been a place of production and industry, both in the distant past and the recent past. So it must have a good water supply. It must feed off the river. What other activities could this infrastructure support? The site contains big sheds. Sheds are useful for many things, for shelter, for experimental space, for cultural or educational use, as community space, exhibition space, play space. And we can see from examples in other cities how sheds can be used imaginatively. This industrial quarter redesigned by Lina Bobardi for community use. This modern art museum in Dunkirk, designed by the architects Lacaton Vassal, who did a very interesting thing, leaving the shed, the old shed on the left and building a new partner to this shed to house the air-conditioned space. In other words, keeping the rudimentary and adding another component which would allow that rudimentary space to be reused. Or this architect's office, which I'm always really jealous of because it's so huge, he bought this timber yard and occupied a shed, just building a building inside a building for his office, which you can see in the background, and occupying about twenty percent of the space and the rest using for a sort of ecological garden. So I suppose there are, that would be the first question. What is it among the bric-a-brac and the collage of elements that exists that could in the short term be exploited or reused? And that before we, we leap, that we do think in terms of, of what is there as a resource. And perhaps it's really important to think that this place continues the history of production and industry, providing a new source of employment for the town. And this is the same in this idea of, of how traditionally in other cities, industrial spaces and sheds can really house new uses in a very vibrant way. Dominic Stevens has written a really interesting book, Rural. And I really like this, this way that he writes about the, about the Irish landscape, where he says, "It's as man-made as the skyline of Manhattan," because we're not only presented with the Irish landscape in that manner. And this sketch of your site with the contours and the river and the floodplain really makes me think about, if we think about, about building, that building is not always the answer and that making new pieces of landscape in towns can be an important answer in terms of making new ground, which will lay the, lay the ground for, for new future developments. And this project by Frederick Law Olmstead, who designed Central Park in Manhattan, he was a combination of sociologist, engineer and landscape architect. And in what is called, the scheme is what's called the Emerald Necklace, he made a new landscape which was both a linear park and a device for cleaning up and controlling what was a marshy floodplain. In the city of Buffalo, when asked to design a park in the middle-class area of the city, he designed a continuous landscape which wove its way through both rich and poor districts as a device for improving both while blurring class boundaries. The class boundary is not an issue here in Kilkenny, but perhaps flooding is. And making a new park in a town is a very powerful thing. So it would seem that here there is the potential of thinking about a new kind of landscape on this Diageo site as an extension or part of your new planned Riverwalk. A working landscape which could be seen as a place for the production of energy, of food, or a piece of water engineering, as well as being a wonderful amenity for the town. In a time of recession and at a time when flooding is a global issue, perhaps a different mindset is necessary in order to find economical, imaginative ways of resolving ecological problems while making new public space. And these are just other sketches of ours, just looking at the, the site and the contours of the ground and its relationship with the river. And again, trying to map these conditions and to tease out what are the problems and also what are the opportunities that these problems could give us. The idea of the, and you've done much of this already in Kilkenny, the idea of the river as a public space, I think, is a hugely important one. And as I say, you've already started this process. We're doing work in Toulouse at the moment. And what's fascinating about Toulouse is it's also a river with a huge flooding problem. And they've built floodgates and key walls in order to protect themselves from the Gharan River. But they've also converted their historic port activities into a series of ferry terminals, exploiting the connection that the Gharan has to the Mede Canal, which leads to the Mediterranean. Here, the river is a public space used for performances and festivals. It's a social focus in the life of the city. It's also a connector of a myriad of towns and villages, an amenity and a resource. And there's a theatrical quality about the fact that they had to protect themselves from the, from the, the river because the city somehow gets raised up and you're looking down onto the, the public spaces and, and walkways by the, by the water. And in Switzerland, their whole landscape is engineered to give protection against its harsh climate, snowstorms, avalanches, flooding. It's a system of barrages, dams, retaining structures, tunnels through mountains and bridges, a kind of man-made landscape. But they also have time to play and to use their resources in a very simple way. Swimming one way, which is the only way you can swim because of the enormously strong current in the Aray River in the middle of the city of Byrne. It's made safe by a series of grab rails and exit points on the riverbank. And in Zurich, they made a floating timber structure which forms a private swimming pool for women right in the middle of Zurich. Architecture students from the School of Architecture in Zurich recently made a proposal for Galway City. And they were inspired by the throbbing Venice lagoon and they were inspired by the Volvo Ocean Race arrival in Galway. And they felt that Galway should reinvent its relationship with the sea. In the way that architecture students can and do, they made no distinction between Venice and Galway, imagining a new act of throbbing water edge. And in a stroke of genius, by mapping the, the history of the development of the key edge, they proposed the stripping back of infilled ground which separates the old city key from the sea, making a new public space full of water in the life of the city and making a new public arrival space by boat. And this was the model they made of the project. And it was also inspired by another project at the top, the top image, which was also inspired by Venice, which is this idea of making a public space full of water. And the square in the top image is the idea of making a reclaimed rock into a theatre which would become a focus for the town. So I suppose what I'm saying is that Kilkenny has huge potential in the, in the presence of the, of the north. I'm sure you speak about this all the time. But there's something really magic about arriving to a town by boat, either by sea or by river. And you obviously have the huge potential to develop this here in Kilkenny. Something that we're very conscious of in general, and particularly looking at a site like this, which is not flat, which has its, again, just the sketches of the grain of the town on the left and the, 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 the nature of the ground on the right in terms of, of contour and profile, is that very often we don't think enough in three dimensions. This ground of the Diageo site slopes down to the river valley. And when we look at how ground is manipulated, say in Marion Square in Dublin, where whole streets were raised to form the social hierarchy of the Georgian house with its sunken basement for the servants, its protective and formal entrance threshold of steps and so on, we realize that the whole landform of Marion Square is man-made, artificial, visionary, a piece of social engineering written about so eloquently by Neil McCullough. The ground of this Kilkenny site could similarly be manipulated, worked to form protection from the river, to connect with the river, to access the river. One could identify cheap ground, perhaps on lower levels, perhaps prone to flooding, and more valuable elevated ground. One could identify places for temporary structure, for uses in transition as opposed to the permanent. Street levels connecting with Parliament Street and river levels connecting with water. Commercial or working spaces, under or over living spaces or play spaces, a river world and a town world intertwined. Urban plans are often lacking in a sense of contour and ground. If we thought of urban sections, we call them sections in architecture as the jargon of architects where you cut through a person and you can see the profile. If we thought more in profile or in terms of contour or section, we could make a more complex set of interdependent relationships, like the Georgians. The plan, the two-dimensional plan, explores the rational and the section explores the emotional, the social, the spatial potential. We need to think more in three dimensions or four or five dimensions when making new pieces of town in order to make a rich three-dimensional web of interdependencies, which is the nature of towns. Sorry, just go back. Your proposed new ring road, this is an image of the diagonal in Barcelona. And I was amazed the first time we went to Barcelona, the way that they can civilize traffic by making a series of layers of streets and roads and allowing the quiet life of the street to coexist with the fast movement of the car. And you're, you talk about your new ring road being intended to be a street. So to humanize a road, and we know so many Irish towns destroyed by horrible ring roads, to humanize a road such as it becomes a street needs three-dimensional thinking. In Barcelona here, it is wonderfully achieved by establishing with the cross-section of the road, these series of social layers, a series of speeds of movement, a way of allowing the space of the street to live alongside the fast movement of the car. Sliproads from fast to slow lanes separated by, by trees allow the two worlds to coexist within the elegant landscaped space of the boulevard and the avenue. Your ring road, new street, will be elevated. That awful bottom left-hand sketch is the scribbles of an architect trying to understand the relationship of the road back looking eastwards towards the castle and the fact that the road will be elevated over, let's call it, the Diageo site. And so one thinks about, how do you make a road into a street? Could it be one-sided, one-sided and address the, the, the landscape of the, or the new quarter of the Diageo site? Does it need to be two-sided? And how can it be civilized? And if it's, if the road is raised, could you make a space like this circular space in Locarno, which is a hundred-meter diameter, which is a kind of stolen space or reclaimed space under a really beautiful civic space, reclaimed space under a very busy roadway? And somehow it captures a connection with the town and with the landscape in what would otherwise be waste ground. There isn't Kilkenny, I'm told, the potential for a new university department or educational institution being located here in this Diageo site. Could the process of education begin now in advance of the building? The exceptional architect and urban designer Florian Bagel, in proposals for redundant brownfield sites, makes a new landscape in advance of any development as a gesture of hope. He makes a place waiting to be occupied. Instead of this ground laying fallow in the short term, could activities be promoted here which would sow the seed for its future life? There are many examples of modest pilot projects which escalate into thriving businesses or institutions. You have examples here in this county in activities ranging from the arts to horticulture to hurling. While restoring your existing institutions, could you facilitate pop-up cheap premises for parallel experimentation and learning? Could you give over a site for the vibrant imaginative population of young unemployed architects to make experimental structures, collaborating with local skilled workforce, much of whom are unemployed, responding to local needs? There is so much skill, imagination and energy in this country being thwarted and made redundant through lack of possibilities. We have an economic recession, but we don't have a cultural recession. You're restoring and transforming important educational and cultural institutions in Kilkenny, and these are extremely important projects. But are there mechanisms which could be employed in parallel which would exploit our current condition imaginatively and revive the idea of education in its real, full and radical sense by combining making with thinking, combining the unskilled with the skilled, combining the visionary with the pragmatic and the useful? We are doing a competition for a new university in Paris right now. And the jury or the client overlaid a plan of Oxford on the Greenfield site, which is the image at the bottom. And we just thought it was a beautiful image of these large gardens. In this case, they are to be permeable so that it makes a kind of myriad of, of green squares or green fields which would become the new university. This project we did for an infill waste site between two quite rigid university departments. We called it the space between the notes because the client wanted to see if it was possible to make a temporary breakout space for students to do nothing in particular in, to have a place of laboratory, a place of experimentation, a socialized space. So we made a new shed, like a new roof, which would capture the sun and protect from wind, from wind and rain. And in Lima, we're making a university which is like a kind of vertical garden. Hugh Campbell, professor in University College Dublin, talks about a university as being a place where knowledge is tended, not consumed, that it's looked after. And we find this a really provocative idea in terms of what education should or could be. I'm going on too long. Will somebody tell me that I need to stop? You need to stop. Don't, oh, yeah. Am I?
Yeah, if you take another two minutes.
Two minutes? Okay.
Two minutes. Three or four.
Three or four. Variety is the main characteristic of the metropolitan territory. Kilkenny has a rich texture of squares, lanes, monuments, public buildings and institutions. Like many Irish towns, not enough people live in the town, over the shop, in the streets, on the lanes overlooking the public spaces. There is a rich variety of spaces where people, young and old, could happily live but don't, like so many Irish towns. Too many people drive to school, drive to work, drive to shops. The life of the street suffers, the social life of the individuals suffers. And Kilkenny, like Toulouse, it so happens, has an absolutely unique house type in Roth House. Twenty-five meters wide, a hundred meters long, this plot with its series of courtyards and finally a garden weaves the landscape and the town together. The house could be, this house could be a model for a new house type in Kilkenny. Generous and urban, private and protected but overlooking the street with space for vehicles, carriages or cars or bicycles or animals, extended families, lodgers, a workshop, a yard, a vegetable garden. In Toulouse, this deep house type is the reverse of Kilkenny house type because they put their servants and their rented space to the front as opposed to Roth House in Kilkenny. But when we visited Toulouse, it seemed like a sort of a myriad or a labyrinth of miniature Roth houses. And we just thought, wouldn't that And we just thought, wouldn't that be an amazing model for a new piece of town in Kilkenny? And again, quoting Dominic Stevens, he, he asks the question, "Is vernacular a style? Or is it a way of being, a modus operandi?" So I think Kilkenny could use its vernacular as a way of being and not just a style. To finish, architecture and community originate together. In an exhibition entitled Small Scale, Big Change at the Museum of Modern Art in New York in 2010, the case was forcibly made that architects need to work at a different scale in order to be useful in society. This exhibition made the case for bottom-up activities as well as top-down models. The exhibition was looking for projects which were a vehicle for change, a vehicle for arresting the forces of commerce and politics in favor of the life of the human being in society. A vehicle for arresting the global in favor of the local. This case study, it's not part of this exhibition, but it's interesting. A group of architects instigating a community to contribute 10 euro each for the purpose of a plank of wood from which they constructed a pedestrian bridge over a motorway is an example of a project which can bring a community together to create a piece of urban infrastructure. This housing project, on a site not unlike the grain of Kilkenny, involves the conversion of a church and the rebuilding of a community around this church, mixing housing for old people with facilities for children. A pop-up café made by young architects from salvaged materials from eBay. The buy a house for one pound scheme recently introduced in London originated in Rotterdam, where people were given the opportunity of buying a house for 30 euro in a derelict street. The conditions of sale meant the buyers had to live there for a minimum of 10 years, during which time they renovated the street and repopulated what was considered an undesirable place to live. You could overnight, using some kind of similar model, repopulate one lane or one underpopulated street in Kilkenny. I love maps of towns because one sees the layers of history and one can get the sense of ground and the life of a town from a map. And the energy, just finish to say that the energy and the vision of a community is such a powerful tool. But without that, planners and architects are redundant. We believe in architecture in all its forms, from the most modest intervention to the making of the monumental. As architects, we are strategists, translators of need into built form, working with the imagined to make the real. Ideas influence policy, ideas become policy, and policies affect what we can build. You, as a community, are being invited to take the opportunity to use this period of inactivity to really think, to partake in bringing about the change of thinking which is so badly needed. You have time to collectively imagine and invent a new model for the regeneration which suits your town, your community. Thank you.
Good morning, my good Shelley. Just to conclude, I'm conscious that there are some great brains in this room and that were we to open this up to an open discussion with the passion that we all have, I think some of us might find it difficult to get out of here in time for work in the morning. And could I just say, you know, Raimi Lahy distributed a sheet there at the beginning and to mark, I suppose, the fact that he was involved in, in, in two very important anniversaries in the city this year. One is the 50th anniversary of the establishment of Kilkenny Design, which was started actually in the, in the region of the brewery before it moved up to this side of the city. And the second, of course, the hugely important 40th anniversary of Kilkenny Arts Festival, which takes place this year. I hope that Raimi's is one of many sheets of paper and emails and submissions that we will get from anybody in Kilkenny because every single citizen is entitled to their say in this process and in the way it unfolds in the next number of months. Mari would like to say a couple of words to conclude, and then we'll have the handover of the documentation.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your attendance here this evening. As citizens of Kilkenny, we certainly have a lot to think about over the next few months and years. We must work together as elected members and citizens to enhance our beautiful city. I would like to thank all of the people who made presentations towards this evening. They have certainly given us a lot to think about. I would also like to thank the staff of Kilkenny County Council who have been working on this project from, from the very beginning. I would encourage people for to make their observations and please send them in to the local authorities that we as councillors can work with them. Once again, I would like to thank you for your attendance here this evening. Thank you very much.